Okay, I'm gonna call this regular Board of Education meeting to order. We could rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Jeff?
Here.
Rob?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
I am here and Jennifer is absent with notice. Okay, a motion, next, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as presented.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, items of interest from members of the board. Does anyone have anything this evening? Nothing? Okay, we'll move on. Next item is our public comments. That's the portion of our meeting, if there's anyone in the audience that has something they would like to address to the board, we ask you to come up to the podium, state what it is that you would like to say, and if we can't answer, there should be a card up there for you to leave your name and phone number for someone to give back with you. Do we have anybody with a public comment this evening? Thank you. Committee reports. I don't believe we had any committees, anybody met since June's meeting, correct? Okay, so no committee reports?
Was there a board committee meeting or a board, uh, bond?
That's gonna be, we're gonna talk about that down later in the bond section. Cause that's not necessarily a board committee.
And it wasn't since we last met.
Yeah, we, I talked to you about it earlier, about that, a couple of the ideas that we had. The next item is to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda? Support.
There's also some call session minutes.
And I think everyone had a chance to meet Molly Schlack, our recommendation for the music director, since that's on the consent agenda. I just wanna make sure that everyone has had a chance, since I asked you to attend this evening.
Stand up Molly, so everyone can see you, our new music person at Richmond Schools.
And we're very fortunate that Molly has many years of teaching experience and is interested in switching districts to come and join us here. So she not only brings a strong academic background from Southern Oregon University and Michigan State University, but she's currently teaching in, or has been currently teaching in Almont and has several years of experience. So, welcome Molly.
Thank you.
Excellent, welcome. It's good to have you.
When's band camp start? Yeah, so, you're right on it. That's the way it goes in the world of music. Welcome.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Dan made one.
Oh, he did? I didn't hear it. Thank you, Rob. It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries officially. Welcome Molly. Next, item, our assistant principal recommendation, Dr. Olson.
Okay, it's with great pleasure that I bring to you a recommendation for John Bordeaux as our recommendation for the assistant principal position. We came back and we interviewed another round of five candidates and then narrowed it down and asked Mr. Bordeaux to come back another time and do further interviews and reference checking. John is currently an assistant principal at Mount Clemens and responsible for attendance, which he has really turned around and improved their attendance, which is admirable, as we all know that students can't learn if they're not in school. And also student discipline, and we liked his very structured approach while offering a kind hand and a warm atmosphere of getting to know the students and being an instructional disciplinier. So, we did quite a bit of reference checking and his references seemed to portray him and it seemed like that we've received him. I don't know, Mrs. Michonne, if there's anything you would like to add, but I think he would be an excellent addition to our team.
I was just gonna say that I think he will, I feel first comfortable, very comfortable that I can work with him. I think he will mix very well with our current faculty, which I believe is a really important piece. A lot of what he has to bring to us are some of the jobs and duties that I had as assistant principal that I need somebody to take over and to handle. Plus, I think he brings a good background in stats and some numbers and things that I think will really enhance both of us, for us to keep watching our scores, where we're at and what we're doing and moving on. So I really feel he'll be a good addition to Richmond and I hope he's approved.
He brought us a number of samples of some of the statistics that he's run on discipline and attendance that help him structure how he puts that together and change the environment at Mount Clemens, and we were quite impressed with that. So, it wasn't quite a question that we asked, but it was additional information that he shared with us that we thought was very helpful, plus he has a number of years in the classroom. And so I think from a teacher's standpoint, they'll appreciate that.
John, is there anything you'd like to say or add this evening?
Sure.
Nope, you can talk, I think we can all hear you from there.
Okay. I just, I'd just like to thank Dr. Olson and the board, Mr. Burton, Mr. Bartow, and our interview team. It was a pleasure meeting with everybody. I'm honored and anxious to get to work here in Richmond. It really, it really seems like a fit to me, like Ms. Michonne said, like Deb said, that, you know, it was like a place where I'm excited to bring my family and to really be a part of the community and really, you know, set my roots here and watch Richmond grow and be a part of that. You know, I have a lot of goals and a lot of objectives. I like to be very data oriented, but I'm also very people oriented. And, you know, I have a whole list of things that I was going through I wanted to talk about, but I'll save that for a later time. You know, things I don't wanna get to working on. I've been bothering Deb for a key already, and she's like, "No, you can have it." But it's just nice to meet everybody and hopefully you guys can come name on a face here, you'll see me around. I'm very available, I'm very approachable, and I'm a people person, I like to talk a lot, and there'll be times you might have to tell me to be quiet here, so if I'm approved. So, thank you very much, and thank you Deb.
Well, John, I suffer from that same thing. People tell me to be quiet a lot too, so, but thank you, and Richmond is a good place to come to. You are right, and we can attest to that sitting here on the board. We're very dedicated to the school system ourselves, and it's very nice to see someone who wants to come and be a part of us as well, so thank you. So with that being said, there's a sample resolution, if anyone would like to make it?
And we'll be approving John Bordeaux for the high school assistant principal for the 2013-14 school year under the terms of the administrative contract.
Support.
Was that Dan?
Yep.
Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? No? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries officially. Welcome.
Welcome.
Next, next on our agenda, we have a...
Should we roll call, or?
No. No. We have a board vacancy. Brian Henke resigned from the board in June, so we have an opening. And this evening, we have an individual who's expressed an interest to become a part of our Board of Education, and his name is Andrew Oderkirk. Did I say that correctly? Okay. Andrew is here, and what we're going to do this evening, we have some questions, board members, we have some questions that we're gonna ask, and when we're done, if there's something that you would like to ask us, or something more you would like to tell us about yourself, aside from what we see in your resume, cause everybody has the information that you sent, we will do that, and then if the, if the board so chooses after we're done with all of this, a motion would be made to approve you to become a member of the Board of Education. Okay? And you are welcome to sit right there. I think we can hear ya, you can hear us, so we will get started. We have our questions.
What do you feel is the best quality or strength that you would offer as a board member?
Probably leadership. I've got 29 years of leadership in the military, from running a squad all the way up to being a product manager, public speaking, it comes with that, so I think leadership would be the key thing.
What do you want to accomplish by serving on the Richmond School Board?
For the last 10 years, I've been a quiet member. I've been very active in the military, a lot of times I was gone, it months, years at a time, so I couldn't have the opportunity to serve with the community like I do now. Since I retired in December, I've got some time, I can make the commitment and be part of the community a little bit better, and I think the school board would be a good place to start.
One of the major things that we do as a, as a group is review and develop a budget every year for the school district. That's one of two things that kind of is our job, policymaking and then budget work. So, if you can just describe for us a little bit about what you might know about school finance and how that all works, or, and/or any budget creation experience you've had in your past.
I don't have any experience on the school finance, but I've been a contracting officer for the US government. I was the chief of contracting for multinational US forces in Iraq north for one year, up to a million dollar warrant, so I understand contracting language, and I've had budgetary experiences that were personally mine for the last 12 years in the Army. Anywhere from a million dollar budget, the last budget I had was, I managed two contracts over a billion dollars apiece, so I've managed plenty of money for the Army. So I think I can take that experience and add to the board here, my experiences.
What do you feel is your role and responsibility as a member of the Board of Education?
Well, first of all, be part of the team, and to come up with a positive solution, given the facts and data on the information and decisions we need to make. Being that a key player and teammate, I think that's the key piece, be part of the team in the board.
Before I ask my question, your comment about school finance, just so you know too, the reality is, most people when they get on the school board have no idea about school finance until they get here. It's a different, it's a different animal, so lots of us come on and we don't know, we learn when we get here. Sometimes the board issues will come up and we may vote, it could be a split vote, a four to three vote, and you could be the three, the minority vote. How comfortable are you with supporting a board decision that you didn't necessarily vote for once the vote has been completed?
I've got 29 years of saluting the flag. You make decisions, someone higher than you makes it, trumps that decision, tells you we're moving in a different direction, you move out smartly in that direction. I mean, as long as you, the board members hear what I had to say, they convince the team to go a different direction, then we move in a different direction that apparently is better for the community, so.
Thank you.
How do you feel about, you know, for instance, the use of a gymnasium being used strictly for basketball, use of the track being used just for track purposes, and sharing the football field for football and soccer? Do you think that the community should be able to use the track or the ball fields or anything for, for other?
That might be a loaded question here, but I don't have enough information to answer that question, you know? So, I think if circumstances would allow, at least other portions of the community to use something, that would be okay, but if there's reasons why you can't, then that's fine. Certainly, we don't want somebody to use a facility and tear it up, you know, we just can't afford to replace that stuff, so I would have to see the facts and data and try to make an informed decision on that.
I actually am not gonna read this question, I'm gonna read my old question from the last time we did this, and then so, what's, what's your opinion on either having armed teachers or school administrators or police officers in our school district?
I personally have a CCL, I rarely ever carry it, don't really see the need, but I have devoted to carry one. In the school system, we're charged to provide safety to the kids, so how we do that, we have to decide that as a board member. I wouldn't be against it, but there certainly has to be a plan of action, who's carrying, for what purpose, when. You'd have to see the facts and data, but I could see where it could be warranted if everyone agreed who that person is, if they're trained.
You know, this is a, this is a pretty demanding volunteer position, being, being on the board, and so I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna take it through just a typical scenario of a month, just so you can have an idea of what that's like. So, we, we all get weekly emails that update us on things that are happening in the district, and then emails in between us, happens on a regular basis, so kind of knowing that that's a part of what goes on, on a weekly basis. I, I don't, I don't know about any of you, but, but getting your cellphone and seeing Margaret Teltow come up is a, is a thing that happens throughout the month for a couple of times, you know, so connecting with the board president is something that happens throughout, throughout the month. And then also getting maybe a phone call from Dr. Olson about something that's gonna be on a, on an agenda or something she needs to clarify with us, and/or getting, you know, a phone call from Terry Tamaco, our administrative assistant, to clarify some things or schedule something. We have a committee meeting, as you heard in the agenda, you'll be, you know, if you're, if you're on the board, you'll be on a committee, so there'll be one of those meetings that takes, you know, a couple of hours of your month. A regular board meeting, would you, would we all say is what probably three, four hours-ish or something is kind of our typical?
Sometimes, yes.
Sometimes, sometimes. I've been in meetings until midnight too, so it just kind of depends on what, what we're after or what's going on. And then the preparation that it takes to be prepared to go through, through that meeting, you know, takes probably three or four hours as well. And then potentially, in any month, there might be a student discipline hearing, that's another evening that takes a couple of hours of your time as well. We all are committed to being visible at events, so attending the high school play or going to, you know, sporting events that are happening, depending on the season, those kinds of things are, are things that, that we're committed to. And then we have a bond issue that we again are attempting to pass, and so we will have, you know, commitments based on that. So I know that was long and drawn out, and, but it's just kind of the real story of commitment in a month for, for being on the board. So, just give me a little bit of maybe what your reaction is to hearing that that's, that's what it is like, and it's a volunteer position, but then also, how do you think that's gonna fit in, in what you already have going on in your world and in your life?
Last, the last three years, I've probably put in 100 hours a week, so getting a phone call at 20, 24/7, doesn't matter. I've done that for the last 12 years of my career, so getting a phone call, we have immediate crisis or a problem to solve, that's, that's not a problem. And Margaret told me, basically, normal routine meetings are on Mondays, Mondays are open for me, so if you want me to be a part of the group, I'll support it 110 percent.
What are your thoughts on the bond failing in the spring, and how do you feel about the proposed bond that we're trying for getting in the fall?
I guess this is part of the reason why I want to be part of the board. Don't, don't be a sniper or say people, until you walk in their shoes, you shouldn't comment, so that's why I'm here. I, I don't know, I, I read the voice, that's about all the data I see on what's going on with the school. Based on, I used to have three kids in the school system, we're at more school events, especially with our middle daughter, and now she's up at state, so my son is gonna be a senior, he's not in a, in a lot of extracurricular events, so I've, I've, I've been with the school system less in the last two or three years since Sarah's left the school, but, unless you know what's going on, you can't say, "Hey, they did this wrong or they did that wrong." So, it piques my interest sometimes when I see some of the things in the voice that doesn't make sense to me, but usually when you get the rest of the story, it makes sense, but, so I'd like to be part of the people that see the rest of the story, and then I can understand what's going on, and, and when other people ask, you know, there's reasons behind it, maybe it wasn't in the voice, so.
Okay. What do you believe is the number one challenge facing school districts today?
It's probably, probably finances, probably the budget battle, and maybe perception. I was actually, unfortunately, was at a funeral today, and at the luncheon, there were a couple of school teachers that were talking about teachers. You know, one guy's at a charter school, another one's retired, the perceptions are, some people, teachers aren't committed, teachers have tenure, you know, there's, there's all kinds of problems that the nation has, a lot of it, I think, it's, goes back to family values and what happens in the households, but just, I think that's the biggest thing, is gonna be finances. There's never, there's not enough money to go around right now, so.
And to kind of go along with that, when we're talking about the bond, when there's not enough money to go along with that, the money that we get from the state, therein comes where you need to look for a bond to get the things that we need in the district that we're not getting from our people foundation money, you know? So that's, that's where we're coming from with, with respect to the bond.
Yeah, I'm not sure really why the bond failed. I mean, we got numerous phone calls, there's all kinds of flyers, so I, you know, you've just gotta sway the community that it's in their best interest, but.
Exactly, and that's, that's where, that's the point where we're at, that now, we've gone through it one time and we're, we're looking at some ways to get the extra votes that we need to get it to pass, so that's, that's, when Tracy's talking about time, that's a lot of what's gonna happen between now and the election in November, is work on the part of the board to get that message out, but the need is there and it's real, and we need it to move our kids forward. My, my question was going to be, what brings you to the table today for the appointment as opposed to running for election? And I think you kind of, we talked about it a little yesterday on the phone, and if you can kind of repeat what you said to me about the, you know, it's a year appointment, and, and the time that you've had in your job too has kept you, obviously.
Given the fact that I just retired in December, I have time now, and unless I know I can commit the time, I would hate to commit to something and find out I don't like it, or six years is a long time, so this is a really a win-win opportunity, I think, if I can, if you think I can help the board out, then I can try it out for a year and you can find out whether I can be part of the team for a year. If not, we walk away and hopefully we both gain something, but you know, it's a win-win, I think.
I do too. Does anybody else, that's the, that's the end of our pre-questions, anything come up with anybody else that they wanted to ask?
Just, you, you have a daughter at Michigan State, right? And then you have one, you said, who's a senior, a son, is that right? You have other children, or?
Yeah, Chelsea, our first daughter graduated here from 2007, Sarah in 2010, and Nick will be a senior. So I've got, I've got different experiences being a military family, we came here 10 years ago. Nicholas has an IEP, so we've gone through that, bantering around throughout the country, everyone has different programs, so I've got that under my belt, or have some experiences anyway with that, positive or negative, I have some input or some experience on that. Luckily, I haven't seen Ms. Michonne too many times. Seen her in office a few times, but discipline's really not a problem within the family, so it's, it's pretty well.
Anybody else? Anything? Anything else you want to say to us?
I'm just looking forward to the opportunity, if you, if you're willing to let me be part of the team. It's amazing how closely the state of Michigan is to Upstate New York. My wife and I both grew up in Upstate New York, they just migrated in names of the roads. Everything is exactly the same as Upstate New York, so I came from a school system that's smaller than this one. It's amazing how, it's scary how close it is. I graduated a class of 89 folks, we had a wrestling team that didn't lose a dual meet in 18 years. Unfortunately, I was part of the team that lost one, it wasn't because of me. So it's, it's, I'm just looking forward to the opportunity if I'm afforded it.
Thank you. I just wanna say, on behalf of the board, it's, it's just great to have somebody interested in the spot. It's not the, it's not the easiest job, but it's not the hardest job, and sometimes you're, you're put in a spot that maybe you don't really want to be in, but if you're doing it for all the right reasons, it, it all shakes out in the end, but we're just glad.
It begins with experience of making unpopular decisions.
Good, I'm gonna be able to have you sit right here next to me. Okay, well, if, if the board so, if someone feels they'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Oderkirk to the board, they may do it.
I move to appoint Andrew Oderkirk to the vacant board position.
Support. Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Welcome. Oh, that, mm-hmm, yeah. What's that? I'd like to do it right. Would you mind if we swore you in right now and sat you down here?
It's cold.
Won't be cold for long, trust me. Come, come on up, and Terry will do the swearing in. We'll get you, Terry, how do you want it?
Did you tell them there's 26 things on the agenda tonight?
Well, I didn't, I didn't tell him, it's his wife's birthday, I did, so we tried to get him, so I said we'd do the best we could. Thank you. Very much. Congratulations. Look forward to working with you.
Congratulations.
Welcome. Hold on, she's trying to find his paperwork. Uh, she's got it, can't get away, she's got it. Terry's good. Do you want to go around?
Bad circumstances.
I'm gonna have you read that instead of repeating it.
I, Andrew Oderkirk, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the Member of the Board of Education of Richmond Community Schools, Macomb, and St. Clair Counties, Michigan, according to the best of my abilities.
I think she brought one off. Oh, okay. Again, I don't make motions. We just have a couple things left on the agenda. Is there an extra one?
Yeah, I actually have one.
Jeff's got an extra one. Oh. See, you get a present on your first night. There you go.
I know you have Terry's.
There you go.
Can I get them signed up for the one pass of the three?
Yep. We'll do that, that's if you want to make any rules again. Okay. The next item that we have, Brian Henke's resignation left us without a board secretary, and every board needs a secretary. So I am looking for a motion from someone to nominate someone to be our board secretary.
I nominate Jeff Toit be our board secretary. Support?
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Toit. All those in favor of Jeff as our new board secretary, please say aye. Aye. Say aye, because it'll be a good thing. Opposed? Thank you, Jeff. We appreciate your willingness to become our new board secretary.
And we do need a signature.
Yes, and we are going to need a signature from you this evening. The enthusiasm is great. Thank you. The next item that we have, every year, we have superintendent goals. Superintendent gives the board goals, and we discuss them. So that's the next, excuse me, Dr. Olson, if you'd like to discuss your goals.
Okay. Well, I sent them out to you, and I think they're pretty consistent with the goals of the board, and that probably the biggest thing that can have the greatest impact on the district this next coming year, in addition to all the fine staff that we have here to continue to work with our students, is the passage of the bond to maintain our facilities and to upgrade our technology that will allow us to prepare our students the way they need to be prepared to go out into the world. So that's the number-one thing. And then the planning for the communication and implementation of that before and after its hopeful passage. And then also, continue to be, to grow personally in my use of technology, because I think we all have to mount higher and higher levels of the use of it. If we expect our students to be able to do it, and I can expect their staff to be able to do it, so that's a continued goal as well.
Okay. Any discussion? Any board members? In January, we set out our goals as a board, and for the year, what we were looking in the bond issue was, obviously, our big goal. And so then, Dr. Olson, then in July, she gives us her goals for the school year, from July to July. So she gives us these. If no one on the board has any problem with them, or suggestions for something else, then we would just move forward that these would be her goals for the year.
I mean, other than the other means, there really isn't any other means available for the technology, other than the bond?
Other than the bond, correct. That's correct.
And then also, just, you know, these goals will then help us do an evaluation. Linda is our one employee, and so we evaluate her, just to give you that heads up about that. And so we use these goals, then, throughout the year to be doing that process, so that's what we look for.
I guess the question, so what would be the metrics that we're going to use to grade that? I guess that'd be the first question I ask, but maybe we can figure that out.
We have a document, and actually, what we'll do, we'll sit down with you before our next meeting in August, and we'll go over the agenda, all of that, and we have a document that we use for the evaluation. You're going to get a whole bunch of stuff that you're, we'll answer a lot of questions between now and when our next meeting is.
It's a great question.
It is a great question. Yep. So are we in agreement that we are good with this, that this is our direction?
Sure.
Well, being only three items on here, and both, and two of the items are based on whether or not the bond passes, if the bond doesn't pass, we only have one item to grade you on, I don't think. I think adding something financial on there would be smart to do, and maybe something that has to do with the legacy, you knowing that you're going to move on in a few years or so. What are you going to leave for your predecessors? I don't know. I would like to see something else added.
Yeah, I would agree, because if the bond doesn't go, then we're going to, we could rate you, don't give you what you deserve, just not based on the bond that's passed.
Everyone wants the bond to pass, and I'm not trying to be negative.
No, but it is hard to say, if these are the goals, the bond not passing really isn't solely on Dr. Olson's shoulders.
And it doesn't mean we're not done yet, either. But I don't really want to start out with that in mind, because our needs are very much there, dealing with the dilemma at the Lee School today with the unit ventilator in the classroom and what to do with that. And that's something, for further, you know, we had on the bond proposal that all those old unit ventilators would be replaced. Now that hasn't happened. I have a problem. I have to figure out what to do in the meantime with that classroom. So, and that's just one sample. The roof has got several leaks in it, and we have people coming out to address how those can happen. And I'm just sharing these as examples, because it is imperative that we get the bond passed, and that people in the community do realize how much of a need this is, because when you drive up to the grounds and everything, it looks very nice, but there are needs still there. So, would you like me to bring you those goals in the financial area, like at the August meeting? Would that be acceptable? Like, if I had a little more thought?
Absolutely.
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. Is that good?
I suppose for us, too, I mean, because, you know, that's one of our goals that we set in January, and so if it, I mean, or is the assessment of what happens with that election in November is one of our goals, too? Is assessing that? Like, we just had the opportunity to do that in the spring, and, you know, that that's a part of it, too? Honestly, just because you get to know, you just get to know your community in a good way, I really think. I mean, what's out there, you get to know through this process of communicating, too. So, you know, but maybe after November, we would have to evaluate that, too, as a board, and say, what are we going to do with that goal? Are we going to change it, or keep it? You know?
Yeah, and financial, I'm looking at trying to keep things stable at this point.
Right, exactly.
Because I think that's the environment that we need to be in at this point in time. So I kind of take that as a given, but let me give it some further thought.
Okay, thank you. Next item is our bond resolution. I'd like to thank Margaret and Tracy for attending the meeting at Treasury with Vicki on Friday, as well as our architect and construction management firm. Were able to fill in for me while I was on vacation, because Friday was the very last day that we were able to get an appointment to meet all the deadlines. And that happened after the fact of the schedule. So the second page of what you have in front of you has a resolution that needs to be passed to meet the requirements of Treasury. And there's a resolution here that may be read. It does reference the rest of the document, so that's the reason for all of that being included for you. I think you've seen the previous one, and it's very much the same as that, except for we had a chance. And this is.
If you could go over it with you.
And this is part of the process. By going to Treasury, we have to do the resolution at this meeting, and there was also a letter that Linda and Vicki had to prepare that has to go back to Treasury. So the letter, basically, if I remember correctly, we, the letter to Treasury just states we're having the election again, and that nothing has changed, you know, we're going for the exact same thing. That's got to accompany the resolution. So that's what this is in that. This is what Jeff has to sign in order for it to be sent back tomorrow.
I have the original.
You have the original for signature, okay. So if somebody would like to make the resolution, see the page that we're talking about, this will get us started.
So the motion is the resolution 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, on this first page, right?
Yes.
So I make the motion that we take the action to resolve to apply for preliminary qualification of bonds by the state treasurer for the purpose of financing a school construction description in this application. That said application is presented to the state treasurer for action prior to the official action of the Board of Education calling the election on said bond issue, and that it's resolved that this Board of Education will present a final qualification application to the state treasurer for qualification of their bonds after this bond issue has been approved by the electors of the said district. That we've read this application and approved all statements and representations contained herein as true to the best knowledge and belief of the board, and it's authorized by the Secretary of the Board of Education, and we have authorized the Secretary of the Board of Education to sign this preliminary application and submit same to the state treasurer for review and approval.
Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
This is a, it's a pretty crazy process. I don't know if crazy is the right word, but it's a pretty, I would just, you know, the second page that has all these deadlines and stuff on it sort of clarifies it a lot to me. When I saw this on Friday, it just helped me a lot to understand how everything has to go and flow, and had the, we had the good news to meet, who's our attorney that was there?
Baff Bonning.
Baff Bonning, who's obviously a very good expert. She just knows, she just knows, she just knows she knows, and was very helpful as well. So I just am amazed more and more at the hoops that school districts have to go through. I'm amazed, more and more, as you learn more and more, it's pretty incredible how big the hoops are and how many there are. But it just is, we just have good people on our team, we really do, from a legal perspective, from the architect perspective, from Hendrix, who was the construction management, there was a representative there, you know, from that company on Friday. Just felt good.
Our business manager.
Yes, our amazing business manager. So it just feels good to have a good team, you know?
And we learned a lot.
We did.
Okay, anything else? I'm going to do a roll call, though. Tracy. Aye. Dan.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Rob.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. So then Jeff will sign that document, and all of that will go off to Treasury tomorrow.
And then we should hear from them in a month, right? That's my, within a month?
Yes.
To make sure that this is approved, and then we have to call the election in August.
Correct. We, according to the calendar, we are going to hear something by Friday, August 23rd. And so we would have to have a special meeting on the, Monday, the 26th, to call the election. And actually, the other item that we have on the agenda tonight was to discuss that our regular board meeting is August 19. And so we are going to have to have two meetings in August, that we're meeting the 19th and the special meeting on the 26th to call the election. And that would take us all of maybe 15 minutes, tops, but we have to do, we have to do it by Monday, the 26th, because you have to get all your information in to the election coordinator and everything by 4:00 on Tuesday, August 27. So if everyone just can mark in their calendar that we will have meetings the 19th and the 26th of August. We can do the meeting on the 26th at 6:00, if that works for everyone, you know, rather than wait till 7:00, or we can do it at 7:00.
6:00 is fine.
Yep.
Are you back to work?
No, I'm still at 7:00.
So 6:00 is good, okay.
The 19th is at 6:00?
No, the 26th is going to be at 6:00. The 19th will be our regular meeting at 7:00. Now we have, yep, now we've got that student hearing that we had to postpone back from June, and that's, just so everyone is reminded, we had already had that hearing, and we were requesting information, so the information's coming back to us. So my suggestion, on the 19th, if we can do that the night of the 19th, prior to the board meeting starting at 7:00. I don't think that that's going to, I don't think it's going to take us that long, because we've already had the hearing, and we're just getting the answers that we asked for. So if everyone remembers that was there, what I'm talking about. So, does that work for everyone? Or we can put it to the agenda at the end of the meeting, whatever. We'll have a pretty full agenda on August 19th. So we can do it beforehand, or we can do it at the end of?
Before works for me.
Can I just ask a question? Is that August 19th meeting retiree, honorary, honoring meeting?
No, we're doing this September.
That seemed to work better, and that we seemed to get a larger attendance once people were back in the fall.
Okay.
That's what we're thinking.
I just, I'll talk about that later, but sure, it doesn't matter to me, before's fine.
So 6:00 again, for both those nights? Does that work? Jeff? Okay. And then also, with respect to the band, we've been talking about different direction, looking, we had received some information, who voted, you know, how the voting went, you know, how we lost in the townships in different areas, so trying to regroup to figure out a better way to get our message across, even though we thought we really did a good job of getting the message across. So for the board to know, one of the things the group had talked about was trying to get more of our staff involved than we had the last time. You know, we did some phone calling, and we just didn't have enough staff participation, we felt, so we got to do a better way to get our staff on board. So we have new union leadership and our teachers' union. So Linda and I are going to meet with the new leadership. We're going to have breakfast with them to kind of talk about what we're looking to do, what we're, so just so everyone knows that, that's going to be a first step to try to forge a new path with.
Do you know when you're going to be doing that?
Between now and the next meeting in August. And we had done a video the last time as well, and Dan has volunteered to be the new video man, if you will, but with some different ideas on a video. And if we look at this information, Rob, September 23rd, you were told the absentee ballots are going out, right?
No, later than. Because of the, let me pull it up on the calendar real quick. There's a reason for it, I guess. There's a reason for it, and I got, I don't-
Because it falls on a Saturday, is that what is the date?
And I believe that's, that's what he had said, and he wasn't sure because, 100% sure because Karen was out of the office this week, but to his knowledge that being that falls on a Saturday, that normally they'll send them out on, on the following week, which would be the 23rd.
So we are, we are looking to, our absentee voters, from the information that we received, they vote immediately. You know, they, the ballot comes and there it goes. And as we started to get information out as the election came, maybe we were late in getting information to those absentee voters, because they already sent their ballots out. So we're-
We nailed to the standard that people requested.
Yes, but we're, but we're thinking that maybe-
But more communication.
Absolutely. And so we're going to, we're going to come up with a brochure, a different, some, some different information. We, we've had where people have talked to us about, questions about things with the bond that we thought were clear, but maybe they weren't, and maybe that's why people didn't quite shift in the, in the yes direction. So we're going to be working on that, and we want to get the video, and we'd like a disc made of it, so that all of our parents get a copy of it when school starts, so that we know it's in the hands of, of all our parents. And so we're talking as a board, just before school starts and when school starts, there's meet the teacher night, open houses, that we as a board, because it's our bond issue. We, we call it, we're the ones that say we have it, so we've got to be the, we've got to be the leaders, we've got the people out there doing it, and then our staff will follow. So we're going to do a better job of that this time around, so. And I don't know if you're around for Hiddleday's weekend, but we're always in the parade, so get your parade face on, because, but we want to get information out. There's so many people in town. It was suggested that the Chamber of Commerce is having some kind of kiosk, and maybe we could join with them with our information about the bond, with all the people walking around the fairgrounds, getting that information out. And so we're going to need board members to do that, and, and staff and that sort of thing. So we've got a lot of work between now and then.
Do we have dates? And we probably do someplace I could look online, but just for the meet the teacher, the open house stuff at the beginning of the year, are those dates?
The Tuesday and Wednesday.
The 27th and 28th.
28th or 29th or something like that?
That last Tuesday and Wednesday of August.
It's the 27th.
Is the meet the teacher night, one night is Lee, and the other night is the middle school. And I've got that in the office, I can email you which is which tomorrow.
That would be great. That would be fantastic.
Lee's School is the 27th.
It's at six o'clock, so if we did the 4:30 activity that you suggested, that would probably work best than five o'clock.
And the activity Jeff had talked about, had brought up the idea with the new concession stand, doing a barbecue for our staff. And so the 27th, that's, that's Lee's meet the teacher, and that's their, they're back to work that day, so if we did a barbecue like at four, at four, 4:30 for them, and then they would, you know, be going off to do their meet the teacher, but kind of a welcome back from the Board. So great idea from Jeff, so we're going to run with it. So I'll get talking to everybody about that, but I think it's a good, bringing the staff back and getting them to see who we are and what we're about and what we need to do. Did I, is there anything else that we, that we talked about with the new video?
You know, kind of putting out there, you know, exactly what the money is being spent on a little bit more.
Right.
You know, maybe, you know, I think we even talked about trying to get it that way on the, even the ballot somehow too.
Because there's questions that came up where if we laid out exactly, you know, we say we want $12 million, but to break it out for everybody so they know what things are costing, and Tracy, I wrote it down from the other day, when we were at that meeting at Treasury and they were going over everything, the, in that, in the $12.9 million, the bond, $270,000 of it are just the costs of running the election. And that gets thrown into the whole thing, so I think people need to know that, you know, from paying to have the election done, all of that stuff, $270,000, and it just gets rolled into the, to the bond. I think people need to know that. That's the cost of, of having the election. So it's things like that to get that information out there. So we just have a lot of-
And there also was, you know, it was heard that, that the ballot language-
Oh, yeah.
Needed some clarification and/or a little bit of tweaking. And so Bev was, she was the one who talked, spoke to that on Friday. It's amazing to hear all that goes into writing ballot language, and the four different places that she has to go to when it comes to school code, and it comes to all the legal, legal things that she has to, to look at. So there were some limitations, it sounded like, as to what she could actually, how she could, she could create that language. Specifically, it was the language about the track that she did, there, there is change, so it is different, so it is clearer about the fact that it is not a brand new anything, but it is refurbishing current, what we currently have, because there seems like there was feedback, that there was confusion.
There was questions about where it would be located, like maybe start from scratch, or-
Right. So.
So there's clarification with the language about that?
Yep.
Change?
So, that's just an overview of what we have ahead of us, and the-
Were we doing a walk, a walk again, or no, around the community?
No, we made the work, a town hall meeting.
Yes.
They said we wanted to do a town hall meeting in the-
Auditorium.
In October, in the auditorium.
Answer questions from the community and-
Have it be filmed, or?
Try to get some other community members involved, was it not just us?
Not just us.
So they have an interest in the schools and stuff?
Yeah. And the, the door to door, we're going to, we're going to play that by, we're going to see, we're going to see what happens with the town hall meeting. I, I thought the door to door worked well, but it'll, it'll be October as opposed to, to May this time, so I don't know, you know, if that makes a difference, but.
And, you know, I know you, you folks who are on committee, but I was very surprised, I have to say, to hear the, the number of, of parents who did not come to the polls at all, the number of, of parents who didn't.
And that's weird.
So, that's a, that's just a, a large piece. I mean, I know it's, it's very easy to, to make comments that are about the senior citizen population, or those who no longer have kids in the district, or those kinds of things, but to hear that there were 500, you know, current parents who, who didn't get to the polls, we kind of need to do some work on, you know, just targeting that, because it lost by 100 and-
177.
177. So, you know, I mean, that just is a-
Yeah. I agree.
We talked too about, you know, there's a lot of restaurants in town that have TVs that play local ads and stuff like that of getting, you know, some of them don't have sound, or you can't hear them in some of the restaurants, but getting the bullet points up there, you know, the, the main issues of the bond, and the, and, you know, getting those out to those restaurants in the, in the community to, you know, maybe another avenue of getting the word out there.
Right. So, and, and just, just because we have the small group, we have some, some outside community people that have helped with the bond the last time, but we'll be happy to have a meeting. Doesn't mean that anyone else on the Board can't come along to the meeting, because we, you know, we'll, we'll take it, we'll take all the help and the ideas we can get, so.
Was there a group that was predominantly nay, that, without seeing the data, I mean?
Predominantly nay.
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 Yeah, that's where I guess it, the perception is it's always the, the older generation, there's fixed incomes, but I don't want to hurt it out or nothing.
I don't know. I, I think we have a little bit of a struggle with our townships, that we, we've got to make a better connection, the people in the townships voting against it, you know, we, we've got to try to figure out why that's happening. In my mind, I don't know whether that's a senior citizen or, or not, but I think we have to make that connection. I, myself, I think the biggest thing is that we had such a high number of our parents who didn't vote, so we, we missed something there. You know, those-
Right. Parents and school people.
Right.
That number was higher than what we had seen.
Yeah, so, right, so I mean, that's-
The problem, life gets in the way sometimes, you just, a rat race, you just don't get there.
Absolutely.
But I guess if you know who the stakeholders are in those, in the township communities, and try to get those influencing stakeholders to be the influence, that's, that's-
That's one of the things we talked about.
That we talked about.
The two, try to have them help us get the word out, just not us doing it, getting them on board and help them get the word out, and maybe asking what the word is that we need to get out, maybe we're sending the wrong message.
Yeah, that some of the officials out there-
How much do we actually put out there to the children in the school district? Boy, a kid going home and telling mom, hey, you know what this is about? Are you going to vote, mom? Are you going to vote?
Well, and there was more of that this time than past.
Yeah, we had more of that, I think, than, than ever.
Than in the past.
And maybe it's a matter of getting, getting information too, of how easy it is to be an absentee voter today.
That's the thing, I think that that too is another piece. I mean, really making sure that that application to get an absentee ballot, that's, that's important information to get out there, because it's true. People's lives, all of a sudden on Election Day, they thought it was open until nine, and it's only open till eight, or whatever, and they go to vote, and it's, you know, it's not available to them. So if you're in that situation, you can get an absentee ballot.
Right.
And so to, to get those applications out and about more to folks, I think is an important piece, you know, a way to consider.
And so propensity of the absentees were, were yeses? Or did we, was there no, what was the tally on those?
I don't know that we got that information of that, did we?
I would have to look.
Think that's one of the ones we did ask, and they were going to go back and try to find out.
And they were going to go back and find out for us? Yeah, I think so. There, I don't know if reality is the right word, but a lot of the absentees are retirees, people that are-
55 and over.
Sure.
I think was the number they used.
I think, I think they did say 55, yeah. But there are people that aren't, aren't older that get the absentee ballot just because of whatever their job is, and they're not going to be back in town. And I think we talked too, that you talked about making sure we didn't have any school events planned for Election Day.
Yeah, Catholic events on Election Day, that is a new proclamation.
You know, nothing so that-
Right. Go withdraw.
Well, yeah, yeah, you know, that way they're-
Because we did have a lot that day.
Yeah, we did.
I heard that, well, people were on the ball.
Yep. And coming in trying to, to vote, and it was too late, so.
I don't know if that made a difference or not, but I think we could just not schedule something that day.
Right, it's still worth trying, exactly. Okay. So when we, when we schedule our next committee meeting, we'll make sure, Terry, if you'd let everybody know when it is, so anybody who wants to come, not just the three of us and Dr. Olson, so, okay?
Since, since we are not together again until the 19th-
Correct.
That barbecue that you talked about, are you just going to, you're going to take care of kind of doing that, planning that, and then you're just going to email us and get us, what, we just, what, when do we have to show up?
Yep.
Essentially, is what you're going to tell us?
Yep, we're going to figure it, yeah.
All right.
Okay. Okay, next is agenda items to be included at next meeting.
I'd like to discuss negotiations in closed session, just bring people up to date, and any input that might be necessary, and then I would anticipate that we would ask for contracts.
Okay. Anything else that, up the top? That was it, those two things.
Margaret, I know back, I don't know if it was last meeting or two meetings, well, Tracy brought up the, looking in the cost for the tablets or iPads for the, for the board members instead of trying to use more paper. Like tonight, we got another full set of the agenda on top of the one that was mailed. I mean, those things happen, and I understand why, but-
You're right.
We'd like to see how that, what, if anything was looked into at that, that could see.
I am, I requested some information on a pro, on some software that is used by school districts for that purpose, and I'm hoping to take a look at that tomorrow.
Okay.
And then we can work on that.
Yeah, I just thought of it again tonight when the-
That's a good idea.
Second set of papers are sitting here.
I guess the other part of that is people have computer access at home, and if they have a computer at the board meeting, do you need to have one assigned by the district? Because if you log into the materials-
I would feel better if it was assigned by the district. That way it's just used for that school use.
Yeah, I don't want it personal.
Right.
Right. And I think that that, that was kind of what I was thinking of.
Well, if it's, if it's logged into a remote site, like in the cloud or something like that, doesn't matter whether you have the tool, because that wasn't the cost I was looking at. But I can come back with it, cost, and then we can discuss it.
Yeah, how about if I do that?
Yeah, because I thought Tracy had asked about looking at costs.
Yeah, how about if we just do that, and then we can just go from there?
Okay.
On, on-
We can do that.
How we're going to do that. Okay. Anything else?
And we can just be a great example of what the policy is, take a tablet home with us, you know?
Absolutely.
Like, like our kids are going to be able to do.
Absolutely.
At home. That'll be good.
Okay. Okay, there's no closed session this evening.
Yes.
For what?
She, she just said for negotiations.
I, but I thought we were doing that in August. We're, we're going to do it tonight. I missed that.
I thought that's, we discussed it this morning, that we were going to go, have a chance to meet briefly, and then so I could quickly back in August.
Okay, that's, okay, that, that's not what I thought, but I guess, does the, would the Board like to do that? I know that's, is that all right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then I would need a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of negotiations.
So moved. Support?
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Closed. So we will go into closed session.